Good morning. It is 9:00 AM and I call the special meeting of the School Board of St. Lucy County to order. Welcome to all who are with us. I would extend an invitation to please stand with me for the pledge and the Kids at Hope, Treasure Hunter pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Treasure Hunter pledge? As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you. You may be seated. Board members, we have two items for discussion and action to come before us today. The first item is the Salary Increase Allocation Plan. Mr. Superintendent, we'll hear your recommendation now.
I recommend the board approve the Salary Increase Allocation Plan for 24-25 as submitted.
Board members, do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will now move to today's agenda item number 2.2. Board members, you'll remember at our last meeting, we tabled this particular recommendation. Today, we do have a scheduled speaker again, so before we go into our business of it, I will invite Mr. Jackwyn to the podium. And Mr. Jackwyn, remember you have five minutes, and in the absence of our attorney who is with us via Teams, but Mr. O'Leary will be our timekeeper today. Thank you.
Good morning. Michael Jackwyn, for the record. So, a while back, I attended a fundraiser. At the fundraiser, there was an item that was a parking spot. It was for the church. So, my wife and I decided to buy it, and so forth and so on. So, Ash Wednesday came around, right in a church with their daughter, get there, and so forth. Right on time. What happens? I get to church, somebody's parked in our spot. Notice they were from out of town, and so forth and so on, and I says to myself, "That's interesting." So, we go to church, we leave, and I pondered this for a while. And I thought about it. I wasn't upset about the fact that they parked in the spot. I was upset about the fact that you go to church, and you leave church, and you don't take it with you, about what's right. And that means a lot to me. And today, I'm standing in front of you about something I'm passionate about, obviously, you can tell by my demeanor. You don't have all the information. You're trying to make a decision. I understand staff has their position. I understand that I wrote a letter to Mr. Cole. He has his position about the process and various things. I don't remember the exact words, but he just said that there was obviously some issues about what I have to say versus what staff has to say, and so forth and so on. But ultimately, it comes down to what we think is the right thing to do. And we're in such a hurry, always get somewhere. Why don't we slow down, allow this issue to be sorted out? And the only way to do that is to take action, right? Well, it's either we take action based on Dr. Prince and staff's recommendation, or we could do something that nobody's talked about, which is basically throw out the process and start over. And allow the opportunity for me to share with you what the issue was. I know it's something that's probably not popular, probably impacts things slightly. I get that. And I don't want to be obstructionist, but I also want to do the right thing. So, I just ask that you consider that, because at the end of the day, how do you make a decision without having all the facts? I mean, it's just, it's tough, right? I mean, you're in a tough situation, because you don't have the information. Call in a silence and all those. You don't have the information. So, how do you do that? So, I know I have five minutes, two minutes left. Finished up early, but I appreciate it, and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to reflect on this over the last two weeks and share this with you. But ultimately, the decision is yours, only the five of you. But let's slow down, let's do the right thing, at least that way you get to hear what I have to say. I thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you, Mr. Jackwyn. Scheduled speaker time has now ended, and the motion now comes back to the board. Board members, we have, our first item of business has to be a motion and a second to remove Agenda Item 10.3 from the table.
So moved.
A motion, Mr. Kelly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. This particular item, the removal is not debatable, so I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion to remove the item from the table carries five zero. Board members, since it was tabled, we are able to resume conversation where it left off. Let me remind you, please, of the recommendation from the superintendent that we were debating at the time the motion was tabled. The superintendent recommends the board award RFQ 24-16 to Wharton Smith, Inc., and approve the master agreement and the project agreement for construction management surfaces for Western Groves K8 as presented and attached to the agenda. Board members, conversation about this motion recommendation can begin at this time. I will recognize anyone that wishes to speak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 2.2 for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. We can move forward with our discussion. Anyone wishing to address the issue? Seeing none?
I'll go ahead and just start.
Okay, Mr. Ingersoll.
Mr. Jackwyn does present quite a few points about local tax, but according to what the guidelines were, it was, and I could be wrong, Mr. Superintendent, it was five years of a tax, business tax statement. And the last time when you read your statement, it was local. And when you read Martin County, sitting up here, I was like, "Martin County's not local." But according to the RFQ, it is local. It's Vero Beach, or I'm sorry, Indian River, Martin, St. Lucy, and Indian River.
Okeechobee.
Okeechobee. I said Indian River twice. So, that was written in RFQ. So, the thing, the thing is, though, what Mr. Jackwyn is, he does present a good point, but it's already passed the process. That was written out, so we can't go back and change things. And there's differences of opinion, but when you have that statement that says you paid your tax there, it is what it is. Now, you know, we might have to go back and redo our process after we take this vote and secure it, but that's something that we have to workshop out later on. You can't change the football game in the middle of the football game. And the first part, or the second question, was about the points distribution. And I sat and talked to the superintendent, and I talked to our attorney, and there's differences of opinion, but from the standpoint of, and I've talked to some community members too, about the point differentiation. And I can see Mr. Jackwyn's point too, but at the same time, I feel like the process was open, the process was being able to be tracked. And again, that's another thing that might need to be worked out in the future. But at this point, that was the process, and it was followed up by staff. And I don't see any reason not to move it forward, because we did do what we were supposed to do, but did we like the rules? Ah, we might have to do a little bit better job. But you can't change it now, once we've already set the ship in a certain course. Obviously, we can change it, but it was done the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I just want to say I agree with 95% of what Mr. Ingersoll just said. I agree with him. And I want to thank Mr. O'Leary for catching me up on everything. He spent some time with me, and I appreciate it, sir.
Any other? Dr. Mills?
Madam Chair, I've done my research. I've diligently gone over every section of the evaluation and the work that was done by staff, and it was done well. I do agree with the comments that Mr. Ingersoll made, in that if there are anything that we would like to change in the future, we need to stay open to that. But as of now, based on what we set forth and what we approved as a board, and what our staff has done in evaluating each company, I'm satisfied with that. And so, that's my comment.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Richardson?
I too echo the sentiments that was, that has been said on the board, that we can't change the rules in the middle of the game. If we are going to change the rules, they should have been changed before, or it's going to change after. But if we decide to change the rules now, then I believe you were the one, Mrs. Hawley, that says we're going down a slippery slope. So, I think that right now, we should, I agree. I think that everything was done decent and in order according to the rules that were set. And if we're going to change a policy, the rules, then it needs to be changed afterwards. We need to do the workshop. But I do believe that the things that were said right now, even in the policies, I believe that they are, that a lot of work was done, a lot of work was put into it before they became policies. Not that we can't change, and I'm one for change, you know, but that we should have a deeper dive, instead of just have conversations and make sure that we, you know, that one thing's followed the other before we decide. One of the things Mr. Jackwyn said was, you know, being in a hurry. I think maybe we should start taking our time and looking into these things, and, not that we were in a hurry, but, you know, we missed some things, obviously, because we are right here, you know? And so, maybe just, you know, just take some time and make sure that we are crossing all the Ts, dotting all the Is, you know? So, I think that I'm in agreement with what has been said today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. And one thing you said really resonates. I think we all need to take time to be introspective of these, and to do it in a timely manner. I mean, we are supposed to come to this dais equipped and ready to vote on everything that's before us. So, introspectively, I agree. That's, you know, each of us need to do our due diligence, and I think we have with this one. I still will, of course, stand by my original statement two weeks ago, that staff did their job, the process was followed, the process that we as a board put in place, and we have to support that process for this one.
I think that it was very important that we did table it, because we needed more time to get more answers because of what came up. So, I think that we did exactly that this time. We took our time, we went back, and we looked into it more deeper in depth, and so that's what brings comfortability to me.
And actually, more things even came to light during this two-week period of introspection.
Yeah. And I agree with Dr. Mills. I mean, obviously, the things that Mr. Jackwyn said were very intriguing and very important. So, I mean, when people come in front of us, we do have to, like, listen and try to make sure that we are making the right decisions. So, I think it was good. Thank you.
And I know, board members, our attorney, Mr. Cole, copied you on the letter that was his response to Mr. Jackwyn's attorney. We have that in front of you as well, but he did send it to you. I hope you had the opportunity to look it up. At any rate, any other?
I would like to, maybe, I don't know if it's a question or whatever, but going forward, we had this already with the last, or maybe we should have this a separate conversation, but we had this same kind of scenario that came up before, but we didn't have this kind of discussion. And I wondered, what was the difference between then and now? Why is it that we're, we had a separate meeting now when we didn't before?
The timeliness of it, to get the bid awarded, to move forward with the construction, and it was properly before us.
Okay.
It was properly before us. The motion to table was proper. We designated a date for it to come back, being today. Everything was done.
No, 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 that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about when we had the other two schools, and we had all of that, you know, came, why, why didn't we, why wasn't it pulled, or what was different?
I honestly can't speak to that, because I wasn't the one that moved up or any of that.
Okay. I'm just saying that, you know, that those are things that we need to look into, because, you know, we're saying here today that we need to take time to listen, you know? So, I want to make sure that when we have issues like this, that we're going to take time to listen, and we're going to have discussions, and we're not just going to brush it off, because we have already made up our mind. I want to make sure that we're going to listen to our constituents, regardless of what the matter is, and do our due diligence, and come back with an answer that is best fit for not only us or the district, but for the community as well. That's all I'm saying.
And that's the oath that we take.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Lincoln, I'm going to call for an oral vote on this one, please, if you'll call the roll. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Let's call the roll. Thank you.
Ms. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Eichfeld?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion carries?
Motion carries five zero. Board members, we have no unscheduled speakers to come before us at this meeting. We are going to adjourn this special meeting. We will reconvene down on the floor as soon as the microphones and everything get switched. Probably take 10 or 15 minutes. We are adjourned. Session meeting to order. Board members, we have done the pledge and all of those at our prior meeting, so we will carry that over to this one. This is, however, a separate and distinct meeting. Mr. Superintendent?
All right. First of all, good morning. It's good to see everybody, all of our board members, and we have three, it's been a busy day. All board members are going to get our steps in today, because we started on the dais, and now we have our workshop. We have three presentations today for the board, and then we're going to be taking another break. And Mrs. Lincoln sent you an email. We're going to walk across the hall to security for a demonstration, and then we're going up for an executive session on the third floor with regards to safety and security. So, the first presentation is going to be mine. It's going to be brief, but I just wanted to kind of walk through this. So, last week, Dr. Wild, our current technical education director, Alicia Sites, Rod Nada, who handles our federal programs, we went to Bowling Green, Kentucky, and there was about 21 of us, and we had four in our group, but this was a very heavy group that involved the Economic Development Council, many of our workforce development partners, the Treasure Coast Manufacturing Association was not represented, but the Treasure Coast Builders Association was there. And they have a very unique partnership. It involves the Chamber, the Economic Development Council, and also the local school districts. And there's actually multiple school districts involved, because Kentucky has small school districts. So, they've kind of partnered for this all-encompassing workforce development initiative. And when we went and visited, what we found is, we're already doing much of it, but it's not formalized. It's not a formalized partnership and a formalized initiative. So, in front of you, you actually have, and Mr. Kelly loves acronyms. I know you love acronyms, Mr. Kelly. SCK, SCK Launch. Nobody would guess that that stands for South Central Kentucky, South Central Kentucky Launch. And it's a comprehensive school-to-work program that involves all facets of a child's education. It involves an elementary component, a middle school component, and a high school component, working with various skills across all levels. And it's very, it's really impressive, their philosophies and what they do with the students, the soft skills that students learn across the spectrum. And also, they talk about what is an ideal graduate. And once again, this is also in your handout as well. Global-minded, emotional intelligence, lifelong learner. They spend a lot of time with the emotional intelligence. We always talk about what is a more successful employee, someone with a high IQ or someone with a high EQ. An EQ is emotional intelligence. That's dealing with people. That's working with each other. That's teamwork. It's soft skills. And what we found is, when we were going into the elementary schools specifically, there was a lot of time focused on the soft skills with students, how we treat each other, how we deal with each other. Even our elementary students, you know, whenever you're talking to an adult, you know, look the adult in the eye, you know, some of the stuff that they're learning at a very early age. And they also provided career-related experiences. And once again, I'm going to share in just a moment, we do a lot of this already. But what we also talked about with the Economic Development Council, and also the folks in Bowling Green, is really formalizing that partnership and creating something unique to St. Lucy County, because it supports and assists our local community in attracting businesses, because what businesses ask whenever the economic development and the chamber's going out and meeting industry, is what is happening in our schools? And it's really almost a message amplifier. When the business community knows what you're doing, and sometimes, you know, we had the luncheon here this summer. Remember, you know, we had the luncheon? A lot of the business community was like, "I didn't know that. I didn't know that. I didn't know we were doing that." So, it also helps us amplify our message that we are doing all of these things, and it amplifies the message of the school district to have that formal partnership. So, we went to Bowling Green, and we visited a number of different schools. The first visit was to a high school, and, you know, the first thing that struck me was, you know, I'm always thinking safety and security and multiple access points. In Florida, the schools really emphasize a different approach to safety. But we went to the high schools, and we heard from some career counselors. They have designated career counselors, and we do career counseling with our counselors, but we don't have someone designated as a career counselor. And the career counselors really only work with the seniors, and they're talking directly to businesses. And we talked to the career counselors about how that's set up, how they engage with local business partners, how they funnel students to those businesses as future employees. And we do much of this. And then we went to the elementary, which was my favorite part. Those are our guides, and what they really demonstrated is something we already do, which is student-led conferences. So, the students were walking us around and talking to us about their experiences with some of the implementations they have at the elementary school, and that was really the highlight. You can see on the right-hand side, once again, if you walk into one of our high schools, you're going to see the same kinds of things, the same experiences that these students are having, our students are having. On the far-left-hand side, you can see they have robotics. Once again, you'll see Alicia Sites on the far right. That's our current technical education director. She's taking a picture of something, but these are experiences our students are currently having. And we got to see a lot of different things, but a lot of things were really reaffirming about what we were doing, and Bowling Green is considered a model for what we're trying to accomplish. And on the far right is the phlebotomy and taking, you know, blood pressure and blood. And you can see me standing in the middle, looking very interested. I was interested. And once again, on the far right, this is the principal kind of talking with the students. And it was truly impressive with talking with fourth and fifth grade students, and seeing their interactions with the adults, and also engaging with students that were not our guides. When you go into the classrooms and talk to the students, you know, they clearly had some of the soft skills, that this is an approach, and a philosophical approach that is consistent across all of their schools. And once again, these are things that I think that we can do better, and that we're going to really focus on moving forward, because I think it benefits the students moving forward. This is, I look like a very good student here. I'm standing up straight. This was one of the most interesting things. The gentleman on the far left is an EMT, and this is called an externship. This is a local healthcare provider that hires, this is the local healthcare provider's employee, he is an EMT teaching this class. So, it's not one of the school district's employees. This is a local partnership where they are having an industry specialist go into a class, and he rotates to different schools, and that's what he does. He teaches classes. And once again, this is something we want to bring to St. Lucy County. You know, one of our largest partners is, you know, Allied Healthcare, you know, looking to some of the industries to provide us folks that would do externships with us. And this was interesting, also the paramedic truck, the ambulance, that is something donated by the local community, so the students are actually having experiences, you know, working in a simulated environment. So, we're looking to formalize this relationship with the EDC. Our anticipation is to come to the, before the board early next year with our business partners, to talk about what this is going to look like in St. Lucy County, to talk and propose some things to the board for your approval, because I think ultimately it's going to help us with our messaging, but also, it's going to benefit our kids to be provided these experiences at an early age. So, when I say SLPS gets to work, I've kind of, this is not the name, what we're going to call it, but it's just what I talk about. We already have a freshman seminar. We do career planning. We do career pathways for all of our students. We do career fairs. And quite frankly, in the state of Florida, out of 67 districts, we're a top 10 district in providing workforce-ready students to our local community. One of the challenges is, sometimes our community doesn't know that, and that's why it's so important to really formalize this with our business leaders, so they can help us with our messaging for what we do do. One thing, or a few things that I think that we can look at, is they provide a very robust eighth-grade experience, where they go out and they take kids out to industry, and these are things that we can replicate here. We are looking, and these are all things that don't cost any money. It's just reimagining and repurposing some things, looking at career counselors. One thing that was interesting also about the counselors, the career counselors as part of the job description, they didn't necessarily have to have a counseling background. It was more about the individual and their working relationship, and their ability to go out and talk to business, and then connect students to local industry and what local industry needs. And if, you know, somebody says, "I need this," the counselor's like, "I got two kids that have that. I'm going to bring them over to meet you." And it's connecting our seniors to our workforce. Cultivating those industry externships. This is a two-way street, and this is something that we've talked with our business partners. You know, it's not all of the school district's responsibility. We need the business industry to have skin in the game, and that's where these externships come into play, where they provide their people to release time, or they provide designated folks to come out and work with our kids on hard-to-meet skills that they need in their corporations or their businesses. And lastly, branding and marketing. Once again, we do a lot of these great things in our school district. It's really, once again, a message amplifier. When you formalize a partnership and you broadcast it, then if you build it, they will come, and that's kind of what we see with our industry. We've done a great, not we've, I'm saying our local Economic Development Council and our chamber has done a wonderful job of bringing industry into St. Lucy County. Part of that is selling the schools, because our schools are performing better than they ever have. That is a selling point to local industry, but just making that. But just making that a formal partnership helps them make that sales pitch even easier. Pete Tesch, who's the president of the EDC, could not be here this morning, but I did say, he's probably watching right now, that I would be just briefly talking about this before we move on to our next presentation. And once again, I was just sharing the trip that I took and that Dr. Wild and Ms. Seitz and Mr. Nada took last week. I just wanted to bring it back to the board and share with you kind of the direction I hope that we can move forward to in the future. And once again, we won't be doing anything without getting feedback from the board. So that's, I'll take any questions if anybody had any.
I want to say I appreciate you and those that went with you. I think anytime we can learn from others' best practices, that's good. I love it when they come here and learn our best practices. One suggestion I would make though is instead of, and Helen, you'll know, instead of a career counselor, you might want to consider a career coach since the person doesn't have to have a counseling background.
Yep.
Any other comments, Mr. Kelly?
Just one question. When you were there, I really got to commend you on this attendance thing that we're doing this year. Did you talk to them about their attendance, what their attendance no-shows were, or anything at all about attendance out there?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, Mr. Kelly.
I know you are.
Because attendance is a challenge. One thing I learned about Kentucky, the most jarring thing to me was the graduation requirement for Kentucky. The graduation requirement for Kentucky is 22 credits. That's it. In Florida, 24 credits, algebra exam, reading exam. We have our students jump through a lot of hoops that they don't ask their students to jump through in Kentucky. They take a 9th-grade, like civics test that they take, that they need to pass, but that's, it's more of a formality with the students passing it.
What about the actual attendance? Was their attendance higher than ours, or?
I didn't ask them their attendance rate, but what they expressed to me is they're having the same issues with attendance after COVID. And actually, they're in year five of this? I think they're in the fifth year of this partnership, but they did express to me that attendance was a significant problem.
One thing I did want to say to you and the board that I didn't get a chance, when we brought this attendance thing up, when we were going to push it and get everybody, and we're doing pretty good, I understand, that I never got to say to you, 100 years ago, I think I was 21-years-old, I was working for an international harvester, and I was going to be an industrial engineer, and I had a boss, a big boss, was an old Jewish guy, German guy, had an accent. And I was late for work a lot, punching at 2:00 after 7, 3:00 after 7, because I played in a band five nights a week. Called me in his office to re-me out and he told me, he said, do you want to be, and I said, yeah, I want to be a success. He said, number one thing, two things I'm going to tell you. Number one, and I never forgot it, like you have your teacher that you talked about that impressed you, well, this old guy impressed me, he said, number one, you got to show up. You got to be there. You got to show up for work. You got to get out of bed and you got to get your butt going and take a shower, go to work. And that's the same thing with the attendance thing, you got to show up. So I admired you for that. Number two thing he told me was find something that you like and do it better than everybody else. Other people don't want to do it, you do it. You know, it was good advice, but number one, you got to show up. So the attendance thing, I applaud you and the staff and everyone for working on that because that's half of it. And nothing's changed. Vocabulary's changed over the last 100 years, but nothing's changed. You got to show up, so.
Well, we'll see. We'll see how the rest of nine weeks, and we will do an update for the board in October on, you know, some metrics that we have. Attendance is one of those. Right now, we're slightly ahead of where we were last year in attendance, Mr. Kelly. And if you recall, we had 900 more students attending every day. We had a significant improvement in our attendance. That is continuing this year, and we have more students that are coming this year every day. And we hope that trend continues, but we're going to stay on it.
I hope you keep it up while I'm going.
We will.
Just keep it up, yeah. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Excellent presentation. I agree with all of it. Just the job coach, career coach, we have a tendency in St. Lucie County and in the state of Florida of coming up with these job responsibilities, and then we just keep on adding it to them. Like a counselor once started out as counseling, and then no one will hold, they're doing IEP meetings, they're doing scheduling, they're doing 101 jobs. And it makes them somewhat, the reason why they got into it was to counsel. So if their job is going to be career, not counseling, what do we call it? Job coach? Let's try to limit the responsibility so they can do it well. And I understand the difference between a Port St. Lucie High School and a Fort Pierce Central and a Treasure Coast High School with the amount of students. Maybe, but that's in the weeds. But what we have a tendency of doing is adding more and more to people's plate and not being able to specialize in something good. Not that they can't do it all good, but that's just a concern. I'm not looking at anyone back there. But that's always a concern of mine because we say, oh, well, this will fit under this person's job description, this will fit under, and that's really not the point.
I spent, I spent an hour with the union yesterday. Mr. Freeland, I'm glad you're here today. Your board members say that.
So, yeah, that's my concern is if we're going to do the EDC and everybody well, we have to do that well.
Agreed.
So sticking with the career counselor, I like that, career coach, career counselor, whatever we call it, is this, this would be new job positions?
Well, remember, I'm just saying that this is what we saw.
Right.
You know, we're a long ways away from...
Well, let's talk about Kentucky then.
Yeah.
What do they have? Is these people completely just doing this particular job?
That is correct. They have a, they have a career counselor at their high schools that work with seniors only, that connect businesses to the seniors. Dr. Wild, did you want to come on up? Because Helen was with me, and I know she was asking questions as well, and she may be able to answer any gaps that I didn't fill. You want to turn your mic on, though?
Sure, thank you. Currently, our counselors, career counseling, and college and career counseling is a big component of a school counselor's job officially. This, and that is in existence in Kentucky as well. They have an additional person, one additional person per school. And then the EDC and the chamber combined fund someone on their end. And that person is a liaison between the students and the jobs. And so that's why the students all do have a regular school counselor doing their career preparation all the way up. But when they hit their senior year, they can, if they're not going on to college, they connect with that career coach. And that career coach helps them find an experience, whether it be an internship or a summer experience, or get hired because that person has the time to get to know the business and industry leaders, small business owners, and hook them up with jobs and experiences. So it's an extra layer on top of the counseling that they already get toward their end goals.
Okay. That clears that question out. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, speaking of pivoting, Dr. Wild, the greatest deputy superintendent ever, well, the second-greatest.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Prince. I am here this morning to talk to you one more final time about the high school boundary changes. And I am going to do just a brief review of where we are, what we've done to date, just in case there's anybody new joining this conversation. I'm going to repeat our recommendations and describe our new recommendation because it will be coming to the board agenda for your vote in October. So just a reminder, I have spoken to the board at least twice, October of 2023, and then also in July specifically to the high school portion of this. We did enlist a wonderful consultant, MGT Davis Demographics, and they have been doing a very comprehensive study with us since that time. The main, the main event is the opening of Legacy High School. And we are really starting to get very excited about welcoming our new Legacy Lions. And so we need a procedure for that and a zone for that. So that's the main impetus for our timeline right now. And then we will be opening a new K8 in fall of 2026. And just a reminder that our community demographics and our population densities have grown tremendously. We've seen such changes since 1991, when control choice first started. And we're also seeking to reduce our transportation costs through the end of this project, by the time we finish this up. This is from my previous presentation where I talked in depth about the results of the MGT work. And they spent a lot of time setting up their initial maps of our county, working with city and county representatives, as well as Terrence and Nicole Fogarty in our shop. Then they researched all of the development that is happening in St. Lucie County in every single area. They analyzed current and future trends with our data, our mobility rates and those types of factors. And then they forecasted where we're going to see growth in school zones and in grade levels over the next 10 years. Also, at the last meeting, we shared that right now we are only moving forward with the high school zoning. High schools, as a reminder, are zoned differently. They're zoned by ZIP code, and we're not changing that. So what we are changing is we do have to create the zone for the students that will be attending Legacy and make some adjustments in preparation for, well, in response to overcrowding in preparation for growth. We also shared that we are continuing to enlist MGT. They're going to do an updated demographic study, looking at, did their initial predictions come to fruition this year? And looking at any new developments that have started since they last did that portion of the work. We are postponing the K through 8 changes. We're going to do a workshop on this because the K through 8 changes really do rely on additional construction needs that need to take place so that we have room in our growing zones to be able to make any zone changes in K through 8. So therefore, we recommended a phase-in plan at the last board workshop where this was discussed. A reminder of what that phase-in plan looks like, first, for right now, we will be voting on the high school boundary changes. They will go into effect next August, and they will be announced in October or November. As soon as they are approved, we will start sharing the good news with families about their high school, their assigned high schools. And then for phase two, the next important variable is the opening of the new K8 in Western Grove. So we will need to do the same thing and create a zone for that school. And then phase three is to determine when we will do other zone changes for K8. And all of that will follow the new demographic study and a board workshop or two about construction timelines, budgeting, and those types of variables. And so that's the part I just mentioned here, is that we will do board workshops on these topics that will help us determine our timeline for future boundary changes with the K8 schools. So our topic specifically for today is the high school zoning. Just a reminder, when we're looking at any zone changes and companies that specialize in this, what they look at is natural boundaries, major arteries, you know, ways to easily communicate the change so that people can clearly understand where their children will attend, in this case, high school. We also look at building capacities and locations. Once those are determined, we then analyze it, what would the impact if we did this or that, what would that impact look like? So the number one thing is how many existing students would be impacted by the change? And then also, any potential demographic changes? We want to ensure that we don't inadvertently change our demographic makeup. So for our high school zones, each one is currently assigned by ZIP code. Our plan is to continue that and create a new zone for Legacy High School and make some modifications to some of our existing zones to address overcrowding, overcapacity, and future growth. I did show you this last time. This shows you, it's the far-right column that is circled that is most critical. And you can see from this chart that most of our schools are at or above capacity already. In the future, we're going to see some big growth in the Blue Zone, and Port St. Lucie will become larger. But currently, the two schools most overcrowded are Treasure Coast and Fort Pierce Central High School. And Centennial is right at the brink as well. So the plan that we presented in July, I'm going to show you that now, and I want you to pay attention to the arrow, and I'll explain. When I showed you this map, I was up there pointing. Just so, to refresh your memory, the color-coded zones that you see, the pink, the green, those are existing zones. The bold lines are the new zones because you can see now, I'm sorry, reverse that. The color-coded are the new zones. So you can see the peach color, the salmon color on the left, that is Legacy High School Zone. All of, a lot of that big area there is currently attending Centennial. A big portion of it is attending Central, and another portion of it is attending Treasure Coast High School.
Helen, just, I just want to make sure that the board completely understands.
Yes.
You know, let's, let's stay on this slide for a minute and just linger on it. So the bold outline, the bold outline that surrounds Legacy, that's actually Centennial.
Current zone.
That's the current zone, so.
And part of it is Central.
Just, just to provide an example, I'm going to walk over to the screen. I know I don't have my mic.
I will be Pat Sajak to Yuvana. That is the existing boundary for Centennial High School. Now he is outlining Fort Pierce Central High School. And so you can see where the blue arrow, I added the blue arrow because in our recommendation, you can see that the current zone for Port St. Lucie High goes further north than this recommendation. In the recommendation, the green moved a portion of Port St. Lucie High's students to Fort Pierce Central. And we did get some board input on that, and the question was asked, why is that change recommended? And does that do anything to relieve Fort Pierce Central? Or does it keep them static? Because you guys were looking at those numbers. And we took that input back and took a deeper look. And as I said that day, that change was made for future anticipated growth in the Blue Zone. But you were absolutely correct. The more imminent need is at Fort Pierce Central and relieving their current numbers. So what we recognized is that that change was there because it was going to align with a proposed K8 boundary change that we are not doing at this point anyway. So for that reason and for the fact that it would reduce the number of students at Central by 247 students, it would maintain the demographic makeups of the schools, and it doesn't require students to move twice. I mentioned in the previous presentation that one of our goals is to never have a student have to change high schools twice. And this change would not cause that. So it really causes no future issues and helps a current issue. So the new recommendation that we're going to bring forward in October is to keep that existing boundary line with Port St. Lucie and not change that portion. Everything else is the same as you just saw. That does do a lot to relieve overcrowding where there is overcrowding and gets us ready for new growth. One of the other reasons why this will work is that we do recognize that we are going to need another high school. So by the time Port St. Lucie High School really faces that growth, we will already be talking about in zoning for a new high school, and we can make changes to relieve Port St. Lucie High School at that time, off into the future.
I just wanted to add to Dr. Wild that not only are we going to need a new high school, we're also going to need additional academic wings at both Legacy High and Fort Pierce Westwood High School.
That is correct. So the plan that we brought to you last time... So the plan that we brought to you last time impacted a little over fifteen hundred students. You can see it here. We went through this with the students moving from Central, Centennial, and Treasure Coast to Legacy. Students moving from Central to Centennial. And then that small group that we were proposing moved from Port Saint Lucie High to Fort Pierce Central.
And this, once again, Helen, this was the, or Dr. Wild, this was what was presented at the last meeting.
At the last one.
This was the initial.
This is no longer the recommendation.
Right, right. This is no longer the recommendation. This was what was initially proposed that impacted one thousand five hundred and thirteen students and really maintained Central's current size, which was over three thousand students.
Right, with just a little dip. So this is now the new one. Nothing's changed at the top, and you can see it brings the number of impacted students down to around twelve hundred students, reducing Fort Pierce Central's current population. At the last meeting, I also shared what the recommended changes would do in terms of demographic groups at our existing high schools. And it was very minor. The change was very, very minor. And on the right-hand column, I just took the largest change of any group at any school and illustrated it to the far right, so that you could see everything else is below those numbers. So that was the existing one. And the two biggest changes were at Central and Port Saint Lucie High, even though they were minor. And going back and reversing that and leaving that segment at Port Saint Lucie High makes the changes even smaller. So they will feel absolutely no demographic change to their population.
And this is what the recommendation is.
This is the current, this is the recommendation that you will have in October.
The recommendation is even less of an impact on current demographics, and three hundred fewer students would be impacted, which I think is the, the most sensible thing moving forward.
No group changes for more than one percent.
Why is this a new proposal from the last one? Again, clarify that.
Yes, thank you. The, the question was, why is this different? The only change is that one boundary line that we're not going to recommend moving Port Saint, Fort Pierce, Port Saint Lucie High students to Fort Pierce Central. We're postponing that one change.
Postponing? Not that it won't eventually come?
We don't know what will come because that will be a whole new demographic study, and that will be planning for a new high school far down the line. So it's, and that change wasn't a major change either, but this change is even less.
By the time.
It's only two hundred and forty students. It's a small area.
And, and by the time we, we look to make that decision, we'll have more information. That did the, did the study that was done will be much more further into what's actually happening in our community to see if we even need to do that or make that change in the future. So this just seemed like the most sensible thing to do right now, that had the least amount of impact, and also solve the issue of, you know, you're, you're reducing the number of students at your other high schools that are packed. Why wouldn't you do that at Central, which is packed? So from a, from a sensibility standpoint, it makes sense to lower the student count at Central by three hundred students. And also, I mean, from a management, it's, you know, you've just got one large school. I think that it just makes sense to, to reduce their numbers. And we don't have to make that other decision for six or seven more years.
Yeah, there is literally no need to move those students now to make room because there is room for them at Port Saint Lucie High. So this is the map without the arrow, and you can see the color-coded zones are the ones that we will be bringing to you for approval on the October board agenda because then we will have the fun, exciting endeavor of working with our new Legacy families. We will be taking the, the zip codes and making sure it's very clear. We'll work with Lydia's department and Michelle Jerger's department. We have a whole team working on this that will communicate with families and make sure that the boundaries are very clear. There is a lot of work behind the scenes that has to take place with setting up our student assignment systems to get this all in place.
Okay, can you go back to that one, please?
This one here?
Mm-hmm. Okay, I noticed that there's zip codes in more than one school. Okay, for example, we have Fort Pierce Central High School, that's three four nine eight six. And then, of course, we have Centennial, three four nine eight six. How do we propose to, who is going where if they're all in?
Yes, it will be by a clear delineated street, and that's the part that I'm talking about. We will add lots of information to this so that it is very clear before we let families know, before we program the student assignment system. It will be very clearly delineated, both verbally and on maps.
Okay, and you also mentioned earlier about not making sure, making sure that we have students remain at their school that's already there.
Yes, ma'am.
So that will also.
That will also be communicated, and you, look at that. You're right there where I was going next. Exactly right. Our, in October, we are also recommending what Dr. Mills just said, that we let the students know, we assign them to their new schools, but that we do have an opt-out option for tenth and eleventh graders and for the few twelfth graders that have the option to move at the, to make those minor changes, that they can decide to remain and matriculate at their own school. So if they wanna stay at their own school, they're, they're involved in drama or athletics or a curriculum program that they love and want to stay, we are going to offer them the opportunity to stay at their current school. So thank you for bringing that up.
And Dr. Mills, that's, you know, I'm, I'm living that right now. My daughter is currently a student at Saint Lucie West Centennial High School, but she'll be zoned for Legacy High. And she plays varsity athletics, and she's involved in clubs. But she will have the, an opt-out option if she wants to remain at Centennial or if she wants to attend Legacy High.
And still will receive the bus transportation that they need?
No.
That particular student.
If, if she, if she opts, if she opts out, she, they have to provide their own transportation.
Okay, that's important for parents to know.
Yes.
Yep, they, you know, the, the, the whole point is, you know, they can stay, but, you know, many of these kids are driving age, you know, if they can transport themselves or their parents can transport them to the school, they can remain at their designated school. Transportation will only be afforded them to their zoned school.
Yes, sir.
Not to get in the weeds, but the required agreement to maintain adequate school attendance, what's that number?
We will be workshopping that with, with you as well, and we'll be working on all of that because the, it, you know, part of it is a case-by-case situation. If a student has excessive absences, to go back to the importance of attendance that Jack was just talking about, Mr. Kelly, we will be monitoring those students, and if we notice that they're not coming to school and we can attribute it to that, they will be moved back to their school. And we do that currently. That, that currently does happen if you're going to a choice option and you're not coming to school. So we do look at that. It's part of our attendance committee process, actually? Correct.
I just hate for that to fall on the principal's discretion, saying, well, it's at the principal's discretion of what maintaining adequate progress is, cuz then you're pitting everybody against each other.
Well, they have an attendance team for that, so they would, it's actually part of MTSS.
Yeah, but if it's at one school at sixty percent and the other school's at thirty percent.
Wouldn't you worry about that either because it's also, there could be other causes for the absences? So they would look deeper for each child. Good question.
I have a question. So in regards to the zoning and the, the transportation, when the kids go to, if we move them to another school, I'm assuming that they are outside of that two miles? So they will obviously get that transportation. There are some kids that are, like Dr. Mills was saying, like they, they, they go to Central and they go to Fort Pierce, whatever. If they are like two point four miles or two point one mile, do they get transportation? What is that cutoff? Is it two and less or two? I mean, what is the cutoff where they don't get transportation?
If they live more than two miles from the school, they do not get transportation.
If they live less than?
No, if, if they, if they live.
Opposite, opposite, reverse that.
Yes.
So two miles?
Most of us can get transportation.
Yes.
We only bus the ones that live across the street.
That would save a lot of transportation costs, Dr. Wild.
As Ms. Richardson was saying, to clarify, that two mile, okay? Once they're rezoned.
Correct, yes.
Even if they live more, you know, more than two miles, they will not get transportation if they want to go to their choice school.
Correct. Let me, let me rephrase all of that and summarize everything that's just been said. If a student chooses to go to their zoned school, their new zoned school, their new zoned school, and they live more than two miles from that school, they will get transportation. If a student is supposed to go to a new zoned school and they opt to stay at their current school, so this is a short-term problem, but they opt to stay at their current school, they will provide their own transportation regardless of where they live. Okay, not seeing any further questions. I mentioned some of the future work that we will be doing behind the scenes, but some of the bigger things for you to be aware of is that the October board meeting is when we will bring these boundaries along with the, the opt-out for existing students to the board. And then we will plan a board workshop to talk about the projections coming from the new study when that study is complete and the K eight school capacities based on those predictions. We will need to come back to you with a phase-two proposal for the new K eight being built in Western Grove. We need to solidify future construction timelines and develop a new phase-three district-wide zoning plan down the road. Once we have all of those decisions made, that, those decisions will impact, and actually, the, any zoning that we do in the future hinges on those decisions. Mr. Ingersoll?
I agree, but I, I totally one hundred percent disagree. I, I agree with the future steps of Port Saint Lucie. But if you go back to our discussions, the previous board meeting and this board meeting, the green zone's not changing. The green zone has not changed, and, and to your, to your numbers, it's not gonna change at the elementary in K to eight. Why aren't we gonna piece that together and start saving money on busing? And what, what my suggestion would be is start, and I wouldn't do it next year. Obviously, with times changing and everything else, I wouldn't, I wouldn't compound this. But I would move the elementary in K to eight in the green zone so that we can start saving money. We have a great choice system, and Michelle Jerger runs it awesomely. But the problem is, is we're giving our citizens too much, too much opportunity to choose in the green zone. Someone in Lakewood Park can send their kid to Weatherby and Midway Road. That's unacceptable, and we allow that. It's, it's nobody's fault, but these five board members right here, and, and we need to put an end to it. And this is the way to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. So that is why we're separating it and doing a separate conversation because each zone actually has very unique characteristics. One, we noticed in the study that literally each zone has different challenges as we go out into the future. And the most complicated of the zones when it comes to this is the blue. And we'll be explaining all that in a workshop. We wanna go really deeply into the details with you as a board before we do anything. So we need all of that information to be shared with you in the context of construction needs and budgets because all of it fits together. So we can't make individual decisions in piecemeal. When we get that all on the table, though, we will have the opportunity to talk about those unique zone situations that you are bringing up.
I, I, I hear you, and I agree with you in the blue zone. But again, I'm gonna go back to what I said earlier, is you didn't change anything in the green zone unless I brought up Central and had to fight for it. In this, I'm telling you, the green zone's not gonna change. You have, you made no recommendations and change in the green zone until we went to Central.
It's a, it's a, it's a domino effect, Mr. Ingersoll. Whenever we start opening schools down south, then, you know, when you talk about boundary changes and zone changes, it's better if it occurs organically. Whenever you, you have new schools opening up, you know, I hear what you're saying, but whenever you start force-moving children and disrupting families' lives, I just, I'm just telling you that, that those are very important decisions to make. And, you know, I think that the way we're doing it right.
But this is the taxpayer money. This is, this is, this is what my concern is.
I, I understand it's taxpayer money, but I also understand that it's children's futures and that we have to be sensible with regards to phasing things in so that they're, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm cautioning, I always proceed with caution because, you know, you as a board member, all fired up about saving taxpayer money until you start getting phone calls and, and, and we've got people in the boardroom that their children are being forced moved. I just would caution the board. I'd rather have these conversations individually with board members. And because I, that, these are very important decisions to families. And, and I understand that, that transportation costs, I'm, I'm the one who talked about it. I mean, we, we are, it's unsustainable, kind of what we're doing. But I also want to move forward sensibly and slowly and cautiously because, you know, step one is to try to make sure that all of our schools are high-quality schools. And step two, we need to make sure that as we open schools, we relook at our zones and how we can organically make sure that, that we move students in a sensible way that impacts as few families as possible. I would just, I hear what you're saying.
Well, I, I understand, but I think all, a majority of my schools in the green zones are high-quality schools, and I don't think, you know, I, I, I think we're, we're doing a great job there. And, and then the other thing is, is you talked about doing it slowly, a year and a half? I think a year and a half, we can accomplish it.
And if I may, also, when we do the K eight workshop, you'll see some of the variables that do affect the green zone. There are seven thousand units being built in the green zone based on the first, the first study. One opened up after we implemented the study. So there, there are some changes in the green zone, but despite that, there's also some, some patterns of the number of schools that are offered in each zone. If we do change a boundary between a green and a blue, for example, like the one that we initially had in the high school, that would mean kids would have to change twice. So we don't wanna change anything prematurely if there's the potential for impacting families twice. So that's the type of detail that we will dig into in a separate dedicated workshop.
And I'd also like to add, Mr. Ingersoll, and Helen brings up a great point, because when we've looked at this, you know, we're very unique as a, as a system because we have K eights. You know, many districts in the state of Florida have an elementary, middle, and high school. Because we have K eights, you run the risk of, you know, going through multiple zone changes impacting families twice, and it just compiles things for our families. So that's why we try to really be thoughtful about this process. And there's also, there's a lot of work that we've done behind the scenes with our consultants to try to map out, you know, moving forward in a sensible manner that makes sense. But, but I hear what you're saying. I mean, I, I understand that, that our transportation costs are a challenge.
I could, I could throw something else out to you, too, is when you start looking at the capacity of some of our green zone schools, some of them are overloaded. When you look at Saint Lucie L., you look at Longwood, they have a high, high student rate. And we can look at some of the other schools. We're, we're building CA Moore to K to eight, and I'm not sure. I know we're gonna try to grow that organically, but you look at Sam Gaines and some other schools that aren't open to, are full to capacity. So, I mean, I'm not sure why, why this is, seems like to me a no-brainer to go ahead and at least explore it with the company. That's my push. I'll stop now.
I know that we're gonna do this at a workshop, but just putting it out there, when you're dealing with communities of poverty, you do have to be extremely sensitive. You can't put. You can't put all the children in the same spot, in the same schools. You have got to spread the kids out in other schools so that there's kind of a fairness or equality going on within the school. So, but that's a workshop thing. We're going to do workshop on that.
But, Dr. Mills, I, I, I 100% agree. I mean, that's why I think this, this really has to be a thoughtful process. And I'm, I, I hear, it's always great to hear from different board members, you know, I, but I, I'm committed to making sure that our process is thoughtful and that, that, that we continue what we have now, which are a, a great mixture of, of children of all shapes and sizes in our schools. And that, that is the commitment we're going to keep, as long as, at least that I'm the superintendent.
And the committee as well as the consultants are very well aware, we are 100% committed to that.
I just want to echo what Dr. Mills said, and, you know, the same taxpayers are our parents, you know? So, when we are considering the taxpayers, we are considering our parents as well, our community, you know? So, we have to make sure, I mean, they have a say in, in how we are using our money because they are the ones that are giving us the referendum money come November, you know? So, um, so it's the same, we need to do what's in our kids' best interest using the taxpayers' money, which is coming from our community. So, it's, it's, it's making sure that we're doing that best fit. You know, it's not necessarily about transportation, how much money we're spending, but it's making sure that our kids are getting the education that they need, which is well-rounded, holistic, whatever, you know, having all different kinds of kids in the, in the same school, not just the one set of kids, like Dr. Mills was saying. We have to be very careful how we are, you know, the demographics and diversity of our schools. Thank you.
We are doing our due diligence with all of those factors. 100% agree with you. Okay, and well, I think we already jumped into discussions or questions. Is there any other questions on the topic of high school zoning?
For me, it's, it's really about making sure that they, with the transportation, I mean, I understand that we are doing our due diligence and we're trying to cut down on the transportation, but that should not be the, the reasoning, you know? Again, it's all about making sure, I'm reiterating myself, but I want to be very clear that our kids, that we have, that it's in the best interest of our children, not the best interest of our money. Thank you.
I just want to commend you and applaud you for, everything you have in the immediate future looks great. It's even better, the impact of students are even less than I thought they were going to be. But I've warned you before, I think we're going to have to move up more schools, we have to build, and I think when legacy opens up, you're going to have a real challenge with the boundaries then. But what you have here so far, I applaud, I think it's much better than I thought it was going to be. And if you're worried about taxpayers, Troy, and what they have to pay, our county commissions and our city councils have to stop giving away everything to the developers. I know I'm on this all the time, but it's a big one. Never going to get this vote. Why do we give certain developers over 55 communities a break on our impact fees? Doesn't make any sense. Because they don't have children to pay for? It's education. Everybody pays for educa-, it just doesn't make any sense, so. Doesn't matter, I'm not running for anything anymore, but those people never voted for me anyways, but it doesn't make any sense, everybody should pay for education. Because I'm 80 years old and I don't have any kids going to school? Doesn't make any sense. It's the most ridiculous thing in the world. They got to start, these developers and builders are making money like crazy. And one other thing that I, you know, I love the campaign thing, so talking to people, I gave you the water and sewer scenario, Whiteport, St. Lucie, everybody's coming here because of water and sewer. You all went out on the bus and saw the houses are 10 feet apart, eight stories high, because they can do that, they have water and sewer. The county wants to do the same thing. I don't think they can because they can't afford it, but if they do that, why should people get away not paying for education? That's all I'm saying, but.
Thank you.
All I can tell you, Mr. Kelly, is whenever you're in private life, I'm going to call you in January and I'm going to talk to you about water and sewer. Just, just, just to hear your voice. So, anyway, I wanted, we wanted to pivot. First of all, I want to also thank Dr. Wild and Mr. O'Leary, who have really been Bonnie and Clyde with regards to the, the work that is being done with our consultants. They spend countless hours after hours going through endless Zoom meetings and look, going community by community, so I wanted to thank them for doing that. We're going to pivot real quick to reading and math. The focus, and it's, you know, loud and cleared with the board, we want to make sure that our students are improving in proficiency. Last year, we had a very successful, we cut into the state's lead by a third with regards to how the state is performing versus St. Lucie County Public Schools. We had a great year last year, but we are, I wanted to share with the board, and we are going to get in the weeds because that's where the work is done, is in the weeds. And I also wanted to focus, too, is we've got a renewed focus on K-2, especially K-2 literacy and reading that I think is going to pay off in a couple of years. But we're going to kind of go through this, and I've got our folks from Teaching and Learning, but before that, Dr. Wild is dominating the show today, and she's going to introduce what we're going to talk about this morning.
All right, transitioning to reading and math. I am really excited for you to hear all the great things that are happening in our schools, and we have seen record success academically. Our students are really progressing, and we cannot thank our teachers and our principals enough. That's where the rubber meets the road, and they're doing an amazing job. And right now, the feedback that we're getting and the excitement around the training they're getting, especially in K-2 literacy with the new phonics program that you're going to hear about, we just couldn't be more excited. And I will tell you, at the district level, I think we're seeing such incredible collaboration across departments. So, today, you're hearing from the academic side of the Office of Teaching and Learning, but they work very closely with our executive directors of schools to ensure that what, that our expectations are met at the school level. And they also work with our Student Services and ESE Department, our ESOL folks. The cross-departmental collaboration is really at an all-time high, and it is due to a lot of special people. I'm going to introduce three of them to you again, and that would be our Executive Director of Teaching, Leading, and Learning, Ms. Denise Rodriguez, our Elementary Director of Curriculum, Ms. Heather Belitho, Mrs. Heather Belitho, and also our Secondary Director of Curriculum, Dr. Elizabeth Pruitt. And they're going to share the new happenings with you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wild. So, again, we are going to be talking today about the support that we provide to our schools around reading and math. Previously, Dr. Prince had shared with you his goals for the 2024-25 school year. So, today, we're going to really focus in on that goal, too. In our department, we spend a lot of time in that continuous improvement model of constantly looking at our student data to be able to refine our practices that we can then deliver to our schools. Like Dr. Wild had shared, we're very proud of our accomplishments with our students, but we can always do better. So, today, I have our agenda for our presentation. We're going to start with our focus in on reading. We would like to share how this state assessment is designed, the features and those strategies that we share with our teachers and our school-based leaders. From there, we're going to talk about new resources and strategies, especially centered around our core phonics program, and that's called UFLY. And that led to some changes that we implemented for our literacy routine. And then, we're going to share data from our PM3 last year and how we're going to make vocabulary of focus, K-12, and across content areas. We also want to share how we further develop our leaders at our school-based centers so that they can be able to monitor instruction and then additionally, the professional learning for our teachers. We're going to then transition into mathematics and again, talk about that test design. It's slightly different than how the reading test is formulated and the strategies that we have for professional learning with our leaders and our teachers. It's very important for us to be able to teach around the idea of conceptual understanding of math, which is a little different than the, the way we learned math and being able to approach it from that method. So, that idea of building that background and pedagogical knowledge with our teachers. And again, you'll see that commons strand of vocabulary, and we'll dig into that a little as well, and again, the support to leaders and ongoing professional learning. So, at this time, I'm going to invite Heather Belitho, who is the Director of Elementary Curriculum, to the podium to share more about our strategies and resources for reading.
Good morning, everyone, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Prince, everyone else that is here with us and watching from home. I'm excited to have an opportunity to talk with you about reading, and we are, like Ms. Rodriguez said, we are going to start by talking about the assessment because there have been a lot of changes in how our kids are assessed. And at the end of the day, across the state of Florida, that's how we measure our success in reading, in math, in social studies, and in science, but we're going to specifically look at reading because it does look a little bit different. When we first started with, with FAST, I was a principal at the time, and there were a lot of questions from parents and from teachers about what does this mean, what does this look like? And we just finished our second year where we were able to learn even more about what this assessment looks like and how it's designed. So, a lot of our training that we do with our school leaders and that we do with teachers goes into understanding the test. We were talking about the rules of the game earlier. You have to know the rules of the game so that we can play it correctly, right? And at the end of the day, this is how kids show what they know. So, I understand that some of our board members love acronyms, so we have Florida Department of Education assessments up here, but later on, you'll see FL DOE, it just stands for Florida Department of Education. So, there have been a lot of shifts. We had FCAT, we had FSA, just in the time that I've been here for the last 19 years. And when we had FSA, the Florida Standards Assessment, there was a single end-of-the-year test, and it was fixed, right? Students got the test and the reading passages, the questions that aligned with those reading passages were all fixed. The number of questions were static, meaning it didn't change. Kids had the same number of questions, and the questions didn't change, right? Kids got the same questions, they just might be mixed up, or you might get slightly different questions depending on the form you got. So, some kids got Form A, some kids got Form B, so questions were mixed up. However, now, we have adaptive testing, and we're going to spend time talking about what that means, and as a parent, it's important to know.
Heather, I'm going to interrupt real quick. I, this, this is nerdy stuff, but it's really, really important. I mean, it's super important because the, how kids are being assessed has completely changed, and, and that's why I kind of wanted to share this with the board because it, it completely changes our approach to teaching and learning and, and also even coaching the kids on how to take an assessment because they need to know these things as well. So, the, the difference between what was and what is now is really important, so I kind of, you know, I hate to just bog the board down in minutia, but this is like super duper 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 important minutia. So, I just wanted to share this. So, as Heather's talking, it's, it's important to understand what our students are being asked to do on these assessments. Sorry about that, Heather.
No, you're fine. It is, it's next-level stuff here. So, some of the big changes, so now, it's FAST, it's the Florida Assessment of Student Thinking to align with the benchmarks for excellence in student thinking. And you'll also see the term PM, which stands for Progress Monitoring. So, part of our legislation is that we progress monitor throughout the year. Rather than waiting for that big end-of-the-year assessment to see how our kids are doing, they're assessed at three different times throughout the year. We have Progress Monitoring 1, or PM 1, PM 2, and PM 3. What's really important to know about that is those are assessments based on end-of-the-year expectations. So, the level of questioning that students get and the expectation at the beginning of the year is what they're expected to be able to do at the end of the year. So, we can see at the very beginning of the year, we're actually just wrapping up our first PM round of testing for PM 1, and we're able to see already where are our students soaring and where do we have needs so that we can prepare them, and we know where some of our holes are. It's tailored to the ability of each student, and that's part of the adaptability. When I say adaptability, what I mean by that is when students answer a question, the next question isn't necessarily predetermined. It looks a little bit different in reading, and we'll talk about it. But if I answer a question correctly, like surface level, what this means is if I answer a question correctly, I'm going to get a slightly harder question. If I answer that one correctly, I get a slightly harder one. If I answer that one incorrectly, I get a slightly easier one, and the test keeps adapting until it finds that place where a student is consistent. There are algorithms that pick up where students left off in terms of difficulty. So, before, we got the end-of-the-year test, right? And every student essentially got the same test. It's personalized now, so if I take PM 1 and I end at a certain level, when I start PM 2, I'm going to start at approximately that same level. And then, on PM 2, I'm going to go up, I'm going to go down, I'm going to move, and then PM 3, the next one, starts at that level. So, every time a student takes one of these Progress Monitoring tests, starting in grade 3, it picks up where they left off, completely different. We already talked about how it adapts based on students' answers, and we're going to give some examples of that to dig in a little bit deeper, like Dr. Prince said, to get into the minutia. The number of questions can differ because sometimes students are super consistent, and we can see, all right, this is the level where they're successful, go higher and they struggle. Sometimes, they have fewer questions and it takes less time to find that point where it evens out. Sometimes, they have to ask a few more questions to find where they even out. One of the best things about it is you get the results almost immediately. So, before, you were waiting for the results to drop. Now, it's, it's kind of like election night, everyone sits around just watching the scores come in, which is exciting, but you're able to respond immediately. And the tests are now more secure, so if my friend next to me took this test, their test looked different than my test. And the ability for students to share information and for us to have inconsistent or unreliable scoring is, is lessened. So, this is just a visual from the state of Florida, from the DOE, that lets us see how adaptive testing works. So, go ahead. Absolutely.
You mentioned that this test, if they score correctly, it gets a little bit more complicated, the next question, et cetera. If you have a student that scores a five, PM 1, are you saying the next PM 2 is going to be more challenging for that student, so it's not like with another student? It's not all the same, I hear that, which is new to me. I didn't realize it wasn't all one test.
Right.
But what do you do with that, and good, I hope the students don't know this, because, you know, they're thinking, oh, my gosh, if I score high, I'm, you know, more, more challenging here. What do you do with that student? How does that, and, and how do we teach that student from there? Do they still stay? Because PM 1 is supposed to be what you're supposed to know at the end of the year.
Right. That's a great question.
If they already know all of that, what do we do with that student?
So, that is a wonderful question, and I'm going to be, that's my daughter. My daughter scored a five in reading PM 1, right? And here's what's important to know. It lets a few things happen. One, we know that she needs to be accelerated, right? Same thing if we have a student who scored low. We know where our, and you're able to see those holes. And even with her scoring a level five, it was not a perfect score, and there- And even with her scoring a level 5, it was not a perfect score and there are still areas where she needs to grow. But what's important for her teacher to know and for her to know is guess what? When I take PM 2, it's going to start off hard, right? So I know going in, I'm going to be at that high level, whereas sometimes you go in and you say, hmm, I'm going to have some easy questions, I'm going to ease my way in. I need to be able to help her and her teacher is able to help her say, alright, when I start off, it's going to be challenging and here's why. And it's really important when we're thinking about that shift, and I have this on a slide somewhere, but we'll be able to skip over it when we get there, is if I am a student who is, who's struggling, right? And I'm at a Level 1, we don't want them to start way up here because that is discouraging to a kid to start off. And I think we've all had that where you take a test and you're like, oh, I'm going to bomb this one, right? But I'm able to start at that level where I am. And for our Level 5 kids, the challenge is to maintain that. And in reading, part of what we're going to look at as we dig in, so much in the world of reading is, do I have background knowledge on what I'm about to read? And is it a text type that I'm familiar and comfortable and successful with? So she might have scored a Level 5, but part of it might have been the passages that she got. If she got something on crocheting or Harry Potter, well, she wanted to get something on Harry Potter, but if she got something on crocheting or something she's familiar with, she is likely to do better than if she gets something that she's not. So how do you prepare Elizabeth for texts that she's not as comfortable with, for things that she's not as familiar with, and how does she approach it in different ways? Heather. So, and we'll give some examples with that. Yes, ma'am?
I would also like to jump in and add to the answer to your question, Dr. Mills. Because we do want students to know and it's not that we're saying it's going to start harder or too hard for you. It's going to start where you already showed us you are. So it's not a scary thing. And in fact, the message that we want to share with kids when we teach them this method is that you need to take PM 1 and 2 seriously. A lot of kids will look at it, it's a pre-test, it doesn't count. We want them to realize it actually does count because if you end at a higher level on PM 2, on the material that you were taught and you did grasp, you have less to do on PM 3 to get a higher score. If you start low at PM 3, at the beginning of PM 3 because you didn't try, you've got to work a lot harder to get to the higher complexity, harder questions to get a higher score. So they're going to share the scoring with you, which will make it make sense why students need to know that taking those first two tests seriously helps them in the end. That's like the bottom line message of that teaching.
And we have a graphic coming up that will show that as well. So when we're talking about, did I answer your question, Dr. Mills? I don't want to move on. So when we're talking about computer adaptive testing, the state of Florida has their blueprint and they share that with us. They say, hey, in these different categories, here are the benchmarks that fall within these different standards or categories, and here's the percent of the test that will have those types of questions in it. So in the bank, in the system, there are this bank of questions and they're pulling to make sure that they're aligning with their blueprint so that that algorithm for kids, we're making sure that we're getting an even distribution of the standards based on that blueprint. So we have one more slide and then I'm going to show you the visual that we were just discussing. But in reading, it's adaptive based on a set of reading passages. So students will have a set of reading passages that are related in some way. Sometimes it's two passages, sometimes it's three. It might be a poem and a short story. It might be a drama and an informational text. It might be two informational texts or three. But you get a set of passages and then you get a number of questions that are already predetermined for that passage. So you get a set of reading passages with assigned questions that go with it. And the first one, like we were just discussing, is based on where a child left off, based on their ability from the most prior test, from their most recent test. There are a few exceptions to this. PM 1 for 3rd grade, that starts in the middle. So for PM 1, so the test they just took for 3rd grade, they don't have a prior test in this system. So they're starting off in the middle and it adjusts from there. ELA retakes for 10th grade, that also starts in the middle. There's not, it doesn't adapt based on what they did previously. Or if we had, let's say we had a 6th grader who just joined us, they don't have previous testing from, if they don't have a PM from the state of Florida, it'll also pick them up right in the middle and all future tests will be adjusted. So once they answer questions from one passage set, everything is adapted after that. And I'm going to illustrate that for you. So we have a student who sits down to take a test and it starts off at low to moderate text complexity. So what that means is it's a little bit easier than middle of the road for that grade level. All of the questions and all of the reading that students see will be on grade level within that grade level band. So this student is an example, sat down. It's like middle to like low moderate complexity. And once they sit down and they see that passage set, those first seven questions are already predetermined based on that passage set. And what you see here is number 1 would be like a pretty easy question, a lower level question. Green would be an average question and red would be a challenging question. In the world of reading, I can float back and forth between questions 1 and 7 and I can say, you know what, I'm not quite sure about number 4. I can make an educated guess. I can go to question 5 and 6 and I can go, oh my gosh, okay, I think I know number 4 and go back to it. And I can kind of go my way in between those questions. Once I answer those questions and I move on to my next passage set, the algorithm is going into effect and it's going to adjust based on my responses. So I just took this passage set, I just read it, I answered the questions and I did a pretty darn good job. So I got a harder, a slightly more difficult text. So it might have more complex sentence structure, it might have higher level vocabulary, and I have more questions now with this passage set. So I still have two easy questions, I have two challenging questions and the rest of them are average questions. So I go through, I answer these questions, I do my best, and I go on to my next passage and I didn't do as well on that one. There were more questions that I got incorrect in that average or challenging range. So then I went to a moderate or a middle complexity and I answer these questions and you can see within there, most of those are average. I have one easy and one challenging. And as I took this section, I got more of the average right and I got the challenging one right. So now I went back up to a moderate or high. And as you can see in the questions that align with this one, I had more challenging questions because what the test is trying to do is see, can Heather, with this higher level text or moderate to high level text, answer challenging questions? And that is how I end up getting my final score. That's a lot. So at the end of the day, what matters and what we see from this is it's about the difficulty of the questions that students are answering with the difficulty of the reading passages, not the raw score. It's not just a percentage. So in this example, you see student A got 89% of the questions right and student B got 76% of the questions correct. However, student B could get a higher score because they answered more challenging questions. So we spent a lot of time on assessments and I hope that for families at home, that helped answer some questions, but that's part of what we go through with our administrators and our teachers so kids know the rules to the game, right? But our job in St. Lucie County, we want kids to be able to show what they know on a test, but really what we want to do is we want to build readers and we want to build thinkers. So I'm excited to tell you about how we're doing this. I have two kids in St. Lucie Public Schools and reading is, reading is my passion and being able to share with you what we're doing for all of our thousands of kids across the county, I'm excited to share. So when we're looking at the science of reading, which is a term that I know has become pretty big in the world of education and in legislation, oftentimes what they're talking about, not oftentimes, what we are talking about in the science of reading are practices and resources in curriculum that are aligned with research and best practices aligned with research and evidence. So Scarborough's Reading Rope is an illustration that really defines what the science of reading is in a visual. So we see that there are two different components. There's the top portion, which is decoding phonological awareness and sight recognition, what we often think of as our foundational skills. And then down at the bottom, we have vocabulary, background knowledge, language structures, literacy knowledge, and verbal reasoning. And that is the language comprehension part of it. All of that metacognitive stuff that's going on in our brains when we're making sense of what we're reading. And in Scarborough's Reading Rope, you see those two strands coming together. And when those come together, that's when we have skilled readers. And any one of those strands, if you get rid of any one, it weakens the reading. So this is something that is central in all of the work that we do. And going into phonics instruction, when last year, we had the opportunity to work with the University of Florida Literacy Institute to bring UFLY, which stands for University of Florida Literacy Institute, into some of our schools that had a great need and we saw in our data that kids were lacking in foundational skills. And we saw they were lacking in foundational skills, not just in primary, but moving up into intermediate grades. And as the result of this implementation, we had the opportunity to walk, to see it, to look at the data, and we now have UFLY, which is an explicit systematic phonics program in all of our schools K through 2. Like I said, UFLY, it is that explicit, that systematic instruction, it's evidence-based, it's research-based, and we are working with the University of Florida to make sure that we're rolling it out with fidelity for all kids. When we look at the simple view of reading, which is another cornerstone of the science of reading, that decoding component, which is what UFLY covers, is so instrumental, that's being able to pull the words off of the page to be able to read, right? If I can't figure out what the letters on the page are saying, I can't get into comprehension. And 70% of students who have reading difficulties, it falls into the world of decoding, which is why we're putting a huge focus and emphasis there. I know that we are short on time. Would you still like me to show the video? Yes, okay. So this video was produced through our amazing communications department. We were able to share it with UF and we are really proud of the work that we've done and teachers and principals being able to share what they're seeing in their classrooms.
We are excited to bring UFLY from the University of Florida Literacy Institute to our students in our district. UFLY Foundation's program is an ongoing effort to improve literacy outcomes for children learning to read.
We have seen students' confidence grow and their decoding and their fluency in understanding letters and their sounds and their relationships. And we've seen teachers grow in their confidence in how to teach those foundational skills. So we're incredibly grateful to them and we're taking them day by day to be able to support our district-wide implementation.
The work of UFLY focuses on two main areas, teacher development and reader development. UFLY Foundation is an explicit and systematic program that was developed for teaching foundational reading skills necessary for proficient reading.
As a former 2nd grade teacher, I learned just the importance of having systematic, explicit instruction. And that's what UFLY is and even more. When you go into the classrooms, the kids are not just speaking and listening, but the program ties into writing. So there's the constant decoding, encoding that is essential for the foundation of phonics and the kids learning how to read and write.
The data speaks for itself. I have students who were performing below their grade-level peers and they have progressed more in the last two months than I've seen all school year. I'm really excited to see what UFLY brings for us when we start fresh in August.
UFLY addresses the following areas: phoneme blending and segmentation practice; accuracy and automaticity of grapheme-phoneme correspondences; decoding automaticity of words with previously learned concepts; explicit introduction of new concepts; decoding and encoding practice; reading and spelling irregular words; reading and connected text.
All of our students are gaining success, even ones that are consistently underperforming.
Students who had difficulty with letter sound and letter recognition, within just a few months of UFLY, were able to read.
The work of UFLY is deeply rooted in the science of reading. The term "science of reading" refers to the research that reading experts have conducted on how we learn to read. It is both evidence and research-based.
Every week, we're able to see the progress of the program and really assess very quickly where students are in their mastery of the skills that have been taught. From there, we take that data and we input it into a spreadsheet that allows teachers to really, out of snap, make judgments about where their students are in the progression of those skills.
These cards are an implementation tool used to support the teachers while instructing during the UFLY lessons. As the lessons have what they're teaching, these cards provide how they're teaching it. In the beginning of your teacher manual, it has all the guidelines and details for each step.
UFLY calls for explicit systematic instruction with many opportunities for students to respond and practice. It follows a carefully-developed scope and sequence designed to ensure that students systematically acquire each skill needed and learn to apply each skill with automaticity and confidence.
The kids use the sound wall over there to find where the placement is of their tongue and the mouth. And then they just kind of go down the line to find the letter that can make those sounds.
They have truly grown as the whole classroom and I have noticed that their proficiency has gotten a lot better.
The confidence of my students have increased. The engagement is phenomenal.
The program is designed to be used for core instruction in the primary grades or for intervention with struggling students in any grade. The program features ample opportunities for students to practice, along with built-in gradual release. It provides teachers with detailed lesson plans, a PowerPoint slide deck to accompany each lesson, and downloadable materials for homework or center activities.
Every single part of this is very engaging. It's very user-friendly. The PowerPoints are all prepared for us. A few clicks and we're ready to go for the day. So I'm very, very happy with this and my students are doing very well.
UFLY is easy. It comes with PowerPoints. It comes with all the necessities and materials that you need to teach your phonics lesson.
We had the opportunity to coach and mentor teachers through the program through co-teaching, modeling, and above all, planning.
They've been excited to have us in their classrooms so that they can show us the really great things that are already happening and to also continue on their path of continuous improvement, doing what's best for our students.
One of the many things that I love about this program is how user-friendly the website is. Everything is divided by grade, first of all, and then you go find the materials you need and then the activity you want. And then the activity is divided by lesson. So it's very user-friendly, very easy to access.
The UFLY program is truly with teachers, for teachers, and by teachers. And we are thrilled to bring UFLY to our teachers and students.
We had some adactivity happening there in that video with the volume. But we really are just incredibly excited that we have this in our schools. We've had an opportunity over the last few weeks to walk classrooms and the feedback from teachers, from principals, from school leaders, and just from what we've seen has been phenomenal. I know we have a lot more to share about reading and math and I could talk about this all day, but I know that we are short on time. So I look forward to being able to join you later to talk more about what we're doing in our other grade levels as well for literacy and sharing the exciting things that we're doing for math.
So we are going to, if it's okay with the chair, we've got a pivot point here. We will come back in October and resume and pick up- We will come back in October and resume and pick up after K-2, because we do have more initiatives that we have across the system. But we do have an executive session for safety and security, and we do have an attorney that's going to be joining us in that meeting virtually. Do we have the court reporter also coming, or no? No, not for this one. Okay, Ms. Holly, whenever you're ready to resume, we are going to go to the safety office just to do a demonstration. And then that's only going to take about five minutes, and then we'll head upstairs to the conference room for the executive session.
If I might ask, when we resume, that we do that video again with the sound corrected?
Yes, yes. We had some sound issues. My apologies.
No, no worries. I just, I think it was good information, and it was difficult to follow. Okay, we will then adjourn this meeting, and everybody follow down to get a safety presentation, and then we will move up for the official meeting. Our workshop meeting is now adjourned.